Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're so pleased to see such a great turnout for such an important issue this evening. My name's Councilmember Erin Strasburger. I represent City Council District 8. That includes the neighborhoods of Shady Side, Princess Grove, El Cajon, and Oakland. And I'm so glad that you're all here. I first want to start out by thanking Repair the World, which is providing us with this amazing space for this forum this evening. So thanks to Zach Block and everybody at Repair the World. I wanted to initiate this Clean Air Listening session because, obviously, air quality has become more and more and more of a problematic issue for people. And more people are paying attention, which is a good thing, but also it's in part because our air quality is... we're experiencing incredible challenges with our air quality more recently, more than ever. And what I've seen is a lot of opportunities for expert panels, one of which Councilwoman Coria O'Connor and I co-sponsored earlier this year in early April, the Post Agenda Hearing. You can find it on a link on our identity flyer if you'd like to watch an expert panel. Some of the experts are here tonight as well. And that, you can find out a lot more about the state of our air quality in the region. There have been opportunities for elected officials to make statements, but there haven't been a whole lot of opportunities for you, the public, to share your stories and your concerns, whether you're an expert or not. So I was interested in pulling an opportunity, hosting a forum to provide you an opportunity to do this. So I'm so glad you're here today. I also wanted to sort of establish a tone of mutual respect. We're all here because we care about air quality. And it takes a tremendous amount of courage to get up and speak in front of an audience like this. So we might be coming from different backgrounds, different places. We might have different ways in which we think that we can achieve the goal of good air quality in the region. However, we might disagree with one another. So I would ask, you know, doing, if you disagree with someone, take it as an opportunity to get to know them afterwards and have a conversation, and have it be a conversation starter. I also find that it's really important for you to understand who your elected officials are at all levels of government, because if we're really going to tackle this, this issue, it's a huge and profound issue. We are going to need all levels of government working together, city, county, state, federal, to learn very clearly who your elected officials are. And there's no need to reinvent the wheel. There are organizations here that have worked on air quality in some way or another for many years. If you happen to represent an organization tonight that works on air quality, will you raise your hand? So look around. There's no reason why you need to reinvent the wheel and try to start from scratch. You can plug in, talk to any of those people who just raised their hands, and talk to the elected officials, who, many of whom are represented tonight. I want to thank and recognize Representative Sarah Ann Murano, Representative Suzanne Frankel, Representative Summer Lee, Kelly Kootool, or Chelsea Wagner, and City Councilman Coria O'Connor, who are being represented here tonight. Are there any other elected officials that I missed? Oh, and Representative Costa, and Senator Costa, Jay Costa, Representative, thank you. And Senator Lindsay Williams, thank you so much for being here tonight. I also wanted to note that there are organizational materials from many of the organizations who raise their, representatives raise their hands on the back white table back there. As I've mentioned on social media today, this is an all-ages event, so if you do have children here, we have a little break back there. You're welcome to sort of drop them off and have them be entertained while you give your statements and your remarks and hang out for a little bit. Just a few housekeeping items as well. So the way that this will work is, there are pre-registered speakers, and there are people who decide to speak here tonight. The pre-registered speakers, if you have them already, can check in at the table with a pink sign. And you will get to speak first. I will read the name of the person who's up, and then the name of the person who's on next, so you know that you're up. If you think you registered to speak and you're not hearing your name, just make sure that you're registered, that you've signed in, that's highlighted, and then my staff will bring up your name to me later. Other attendees, if you have them already, can check in at the pink sign and can sign to speak here as well. So they'll speak up in the order that you signed up. Each person will have three minutes. A verbal cue and a thumbs up symbol will indicate your time has begun. So you'll see Molly right here, a yellow sign that your time has begun. A green sign will indicate that you have two minutes remaining. A yellow sign will indicate that you have one minute remaining. And the audible beep from the timer and your raised fist will indicate that your time has expired. Comments may touch on any topic related to air quality in this region. So I know that issues like clerton and the clerton and cookwork spire are on a lot of people's minds right now. And that's funny, if you wanted to talk about that, that's a really big issue. But there are other issues as well that deal with transportation, which is a major air pollution source, building efficiency, solutions like renewable energy and energy efficiency. So all of those are welcome if you are so inclined to touch on those issues. You don't have to be an expert to testify or to speak. Personal stories are encouraged, so please remember that. And if you'd like to submit a written remark, you can pick up an index card at the sign-in table. There are some people that have indicated that they wanted to speak but then put in the last minute, so we will have some staff and interns be reading remarks on their behalf. So if you have to go, you're not able to stay, you can give your remark to us and we'll make sure it's read into the record. Speaking of staff and interns, I want to give a big, big thank you and shout out to my staff and interns who are here tonight. Please raise your hands. Maura Hirsch, Molly are on my staff, and our interns, Summer Joy, McCann, Joey, and And on that note, I'm going to turn it over to Joey Scapolo, an intern in our office, who will just give you a couple of pointers on the knowledge side. So without further ado, Joey Scapolo, thank you.
Thank you. My speech is not going to be as informative or exciting as any of the other ones, but all I wanted to say is that whenever you're speaking into the microphone, make sure that your face is as close to the microphone as possible. Even if you start moving away and maybe you start just stipulating and getting bombastic like I do, I want you to remain in some sort of rigidity here in the microphone. And we're also streaming the entire event on YouTube, so if you want your remarks to be able to be seen by your family members or anybody else who is interested, we're going to be posting them onto our YouTube page, so you can like, comment, subscribe, share, all that stuff. So that's all I wanted to say, and I'm going to step aside now, so you can...
Thank you, Joey. So I'll be over here announcing the names of the people who are up next. I did want to mention, I did see County Councilwoman Anita Frazio out of Waukesha, so thank you for being here as well. So first up, Neil Fierce Donahue, and on deck, Rachel Philippi.
All right, I will try to be brief, because I was actually wrong with Post Agenda. I'm Neil Vonnegut. I am a professor and associate in the industry at Carnegie Mellon University. And frankly, I'm kind of one of the world's experts on this stuff, so I'm happy to talk to people about it whenever I'm around. And I actually grew up here. My parents died in 1950 when this was hell on the wind. So I'm going to give you a bad news, sorry, a good news, bad news. Good news, we have about three minutes here. And the good news is that things have gotten better. So everyone's like, "I grew up around here, it was terrible." Yes, it was. And the reason that things have gotten better is because we've had incredibly strong enforcement from things like the Clean Air Act, organizations like GASP, which has been at this for 50 years, unbelievable. And that is incredibly important. And so the improvements in air quality have saved lives, and they've saved lives in a serious way. So in spite of that, this is the bad news part. You guys are saying, "Oh, yeah, it's better," so it's fine. Our best estimate is air pollution in Allegheny County right now kills about 250 people every year, and that might be a little more valid, it's 250 or more, okay? Guns kill 80 people a year in Allegheny County. Cars kill 80 people a year in Allegheny County. This is like a phenomenon. This is a really big deal. And so it really is something we still need to address. Okay, now here's the good news again. And the good news is actually about climate change, because we are going to solve the climate problem. And climate pollution and air pollution largely come from the same sources they come from burning fossil fuels. So as we address decarbonization, as we get rid of the pollution associated, the carbon dioxide associated with fossil fuels, we're going to dramatically cut down on that air pollution. That is going to eliminate a lot of the fine particle air pollution, a lot of the ozone pollution that's killing a couple hundred fifty people every year in the county. And that means we're going to save those 200, 250 lives who are here. That is an enormous benefit, and it is worth the enormous investments required locally, nationally, and globally to address the problem. And we have all we need to do it. So I'm optimistic that we can get this done, but we need political pressure locally at the state level, at the national level, and the international organizations to do it.
Thank you, Neil. Next up, Rachel Philippi. On deck, Glenn O'Callaghan.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Philippi, and I'm the executive director of the group against smog and pollution gas. We have been around 50 years working to improve air quality in southwest Pennsylvania. And as Neil said, we have made a lot of improvements in the last five decades, but we continue to struggle with some of the worst air quality in the nation. Thank you to Councilwoman Strasburger for holding tonight's hearing, for allowing everybody to speak, and for shedding a light upon this important issue. So what do we know? We know that Pittsburgh ranks as one of the top 10 most polluted cities in the nation in regard to year-round particle pollution. Fine particles, which are linked to everything from asthma attacks to heart attacks, strokes, cancer, dementia, diabetes, and premature death. We know Allegheny County ranks in the top 2% of counties in the United States for cancer risks from air pollution. We know childhood asthma rates in some Allegheny County schools are more than double the state average. We know air pollution makes people sick, it shortens lives, and it ruins people's quality of life. New research shows air pollution affects us socially through decreased productivity, school attendance, and lifetime earnings. The fight for clean air can't just come from organizations like GASP, or even from just the general public. We need, we absolutely depend on our local and state leaders to protect our health, to write laws and regulations that are protective and futuristic, but also to hold accountable our regulators when they are not doing what they need to do to protect our health. So what can city council do? First, speak out. That's probably the most important thing we need, because air pollution is not just a localized issue, it's a regional problem. So the pollution coming from the Clerton and Cookers doesn't just affect Clerton, doesn't just affect the Mon Valley, it affects all of us. There are no borders that it doesn't pass through. And so that pollution and the associated poor odors that go along with it are something we hear about all the time. Right now, the health department is considering poke-up regulations, considering improving poke-up regulations that we have in Allegheny County to reduce hydrochlor sulfide, that rotten egg odor we're all too familiar with. When that comes out with a public comment, it will be so important for all of us here to speak out, and for city council members to make sure their constituents know about this issue. Number two, reduce diesel emissions. Diesel emissions are number one of the main air-toxic cancer risks in our region. They're stupid, right there at ground level, where we're all breathing and waiting for the bus, and kids are playing on the playground. City council passed new construction legislation a couple of years ago. That finally was implemented earlier this year in the Duck Hollow project. But that only affects city funded projects. We need other authorities, other institutions to adopt the same type of clean construction policy, because it can't be the exception. That must be the norm, that every one of these policies is utilized. What else do we need to do? Let's think about air pollution, high air pollution days, and steps that we can take to reduce pollution on those days, things that people can do. Thank you so much for having me on. I'm delighted to go on.
Thank you, Rachel. Glenn O'Callaghan, followed by Eva Resnick Day.
I'm a co-founder of Rail Protection Protection Pittsburgh, here to talk to you about Norfolk Southern's proposal to increase train traffic through the center of the city. Pitt analysts have determined that 175,000 of you live within the one-mile derailment of blast zone and pollution fallout zone. They've determined that this increased traffic will be the equivalent of 6,800 diesel buses running past your doorstep every day. They've determined that for every hour that a train idles, it will result in one pollution-related death per year. We have evidence that Norfolk Southern is idling trains for four days and four nights in Allegheny Commons. This is only going to get worse when traffic increases. Norfolk Southern wants you to believe that double-stacked trains only carry dog food and mouthwash. The reality is that double-stacked oil trains are in our very near future, and Pro-Tank has stackable intermodal gas and oil pods. That's what's coming. In addition, on April 10th, President Trump signed an executive order allowing liquid natural gas to be sent by rail. Norfolk Southern is going to double the traffic on your train tracks, and then it's going to increase 86.4% according to their own statistics over the next 10 years. So here's the solution to double-stacked trains. We'd like city council to repair the West North Avenue Bridge in ways that grandfather its height rather than reconstruct or replace it. The city was provided with evidence that it owns that bridge because it owns the land under the bridge. That bridge has a 17-year remaining useful life. The cities of Chicago and Atlanta got Norfolk Southern to enter into a voluntary agreement by securing diesel reduction pollution funding. In Pennsylvania, those sources are our portion of the Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Fund, the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Fund, and the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act. These funds would be used to provide scrubbers for existing locomotives and to build cleaner switching and Tier IV locomotives. Incidentally, at Norfolk Southern's Altoona, Pennsylvania plant, it's a win-win. They get jobs and more money into Pennsylvania, we get cleaner air. You'll find a way to do this if you're serious about your July 1 council resolution, committing yourself to support our residents in their fight for cleaner, healthier, and more breathable air. RP3 is available to come to your community. We have a one-hour, a lot more detail on this. See me afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Next up, Eva Resnick Day, followed by Scott Smith.
So my name's Eva Resnick Day. I am a community organizer at the Sierra Club, a breather of air, and avid walker. So I really love walking, so much so that I hiked the Appalachian Trail in 2015 from Georgia to Maine. Walking is my really only form of exercise, my mental health care, and my main form of transportation. Yet I know that way, my walk to and from work along Penn Avenue during rush hour could very well be making me sicker. Breathing in fumes from cars and already polluted Pittsburgh air is probably slowing me down instead of making my heart and cardio better, is what people usually walk for. So we all know, we've heard, Pittsburgh ranks the fourth in air pollution deaths in the country. That is fourth. We are talking about over 250 deaths per year from air pollution in 2017 alone here in Pittsburgh. These numbers are on the same level as the opioid crisis, and these numbers target children, women, and the elderly. This is an emergency, and it must be treated like one. For my three decades of life, I've heard ongoing that Pittsburgh air is getting better, and it was, but that's no longer true. Our air quality is declining, and while it's declining, I stand here with a proposed nature build-out of a shale cracker plant and polluting plastics, with proposed fracking in Radecat, the Edward Thompson Mill, and more. At a time of emergency, we're not only not fighting it with fervor, but some of our politicians in the county are actively pushing development to make the root cause even worse. So we have to stop believing that air pollution cares about our made-up city and the borderlines. It doesn't. So this is all of our problem and all of our responsibility. So I believe that the city has a moral imperative to use their voice and relationships and access to speak up to stop the cracker plant and fracking development that will make our pollution crisis worse for us. But here's the thing about stopping the development, people need jobs. So for decades, the environmental movement has parroted the line, we've got free jobs, workers can work in wind and solar, without actually spending an ounce of thought and energy on what that really means or how we're making it happen. When we say we'll replace fossil fuel projects with clean energy projects, when there's none proposed and families need food on the table today, it's disingenuous. Saying clean energy jobs are good jobs without addressing the fact that wages are currently much lower than many coal and afro-dashcom, or almost entirely non-union, and a bad track record for women and people of color, is disingenuous. But B, and I mean city council, environmentalists, unions, we don't have to be reactive. We can be proactive to put in safeguards and better technology to prevent leaks and fires that protect both the workers and the local residents that live and work by fossil fuel infrastructure. For us to look at the large group of now over 90,000 clean energy workers in Pennsylvania as an opportunity to organize and strengthen our unions and reach our jobs, and to proactively be training the next generation of jobs that will need to be filled through trade schools and apprenticeships as college debt is increasing and the ability to get to paint jobs is diminishing. So we need to make sure the workers of tomorrow know how to deal with solar roofs without causing, without calling in solar installation companies, and the city can be actively using its relationships influence to seek out development, to make Western PA a manufacturing hub for wind parts, large-scale local solar, and bring those jobs here to Pennsylvania. And we have to do, we have to fight for that with everything we have and use everything we have, because it's an emergency.
Next up, Scott Smith. I also want to say, if you're standing in the back, there are rows of seats right there in front, chairs up here, so you do not need to stand if you don't want to. Also, thank you to County Councilman Paul Lyne for being here.
Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Smith from the Southwest Pennsylvania Environmental Health Project. And we'd like to thank Councilmember Strasburger for hosting this really important event. By now, you've all heard about the build-out of the shale gas industry in our region. And I admit that when I first came to EHP, as my organization is commonly called, I was fairly skeptical of the claims that my colleagues were making about the health effects that people were suffering from the shale gas industry. And I further admit that, living as president of Squirrel Hill, I thought, "Well, that's way out in Washington County somewhere, I don't have to worry about that where I live up on, in the middle of Pittsburgh." Well, I was proven wrong on both counts. The researchers and public health experts at EHP have already seen the cost of the shale gas industry that's extracted from people living in our region. EHP has witnessed firsthand the higher incidences of asthma and skin rashes, of anxiety and depression. EHP has monitored and measured the dangerous levels of toxic pollutants coming from wells and other shale gas facilities. Researchers across our nation, more and more every day, are showing a clear correlation between the dangerous chemicals that the shale gas industry uses and a host of health issues. Over 90% of the research that's been done between 2016 and 2018 on the health impacts of fracking showed that there were signs of harm or potential harm to human health. So the industry tells us that there are no studies proving the existence of any health effects from shale gas activity. They are intentionally speeding us. Governor Wolf and his Department of Health say they don't have enough evidence to do anything about it. We believe that they do. As for whether the shale gas industry affects the quality of life here in the city, the answer is yes. Cracking and its related activity all release hazardous pollutants and travel into the city, impacts the quality of our air, water, and soil region-wide. And not to mention that shale gas facilities release a great quantities of methane that help to contribute to climate warming. Leaks from shale gas facilities are helping to make our air dirty and our climate hotter. Finally, let me ask you, do we, the residents of Pittsburgh and surrounding areas, want to be test animals for an industry that has been cited with 12,000 violations of regulations in our state line? Or will we call for stricter regulations and real accountability? Will we keep the shale gas industry out of our backyards, as Governor Wolf has pledged to do with the Delaware River Basin? Will we protect the health of our families and make our city and our region the kind of place that truly worth living, worth living? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next up is Mark Dixon, followed by April Fossera.
So my name is Mark Dixon. I'm a filmmaker working on air quality documentary called "Inversion: The Unfinished Business of Pittsburgh Air," because I really do feel that it is unfinished business and that time is now to change it. Better than it used to be, as I said before, better than it used to be is no longer when it comes to air. And I think all of us here in the standing room, in the room, is a testament to that. Also, the political dynamic that's changed over the last six months and three years, pressed for 50 years, we're coming to a different moment in our region's history. And I would love for all the local politicians and the representatives present here to recognize that, that we are starting to like politicians who pay attention and fight hard for clean air. If you do not fight hard for clean air, we're done with you. What on this thing do I have to, every time I go out for a jog, and I've been jogging since I was 15, do I have to check my Purple Air Network outside, the Aware Monitor on my front porch, the Air Patrol's app, the Airdow.gov app, the Allegheny County Health Department Council, which they just launched like today? It's pretty cool, you should check it out. And possibly even check the Breathe Cam, just to see if I can go jogging outside and not encounter the surf levels of talling, embancing, acne, anxiety, and other pollutants that I know are out there when steel mills are whacking towards Squirrel Hill South. How do I explain that to visitors who come to my house and say, "What's that?" You say, "Oh, you know, I'm sorry, that's just a stench that we get from the Mon Valley sometimes, that's just what Pittsburgh smells like sometimes." I'm working on it. And they make a note for themselves, and then they don't move here, or they leave. I've been to the airport a couple times recently for family issues, and I ran into two people at the airport who have decided to leave Pittsburgh and go to Vermont, which has the cleanest air in the country, by the way, because of air quality. People don't want to move here because of air, and they don't want to stay because of air. And maybe not everybody moves for that sole reason, and not everybody smells it, but a lot of people do, and a lot of people are angry, and we're not, we don't want to deal with this anymore, and we want to keep our friends here, we want to keep our family here. For the record, it does want people to know that when we keep air quality here, we also keep, there's a strong correlation with premature death, heart disease, strokes, COPD, irregular heartbeats, asthma, cancer, decreased lung function, dementia, schizophrenia, ADHD, slower lung growth, stillbirth, low birth weight, and obesity, with a possible connection to diabetes, premature birth, SIDS, reproductive and developmental factors in children, fetal part, cognitive function, anxiety, autism, lower IQ, Alzheimer's, depression, and crime. Do we want that here? These are the issues that every politician needs to care about, and air quality makes all of them that much harder to work with. I'd like for the, okay, it also puts communities into conflict. People get really angry about air quality, and it hits us sometimes in today's arguments with workers, who we need to care about. This is not about people versus people, this is about corporations and governance versus people's right to clean air, clean water, and clean environments. And until we start to see ourselves as people, is that the zero mark? Okay, thank you. Until we start to see each other as people and love the people, but maybe work towards a vision of what's possible, and when we all are here to acknowledge what's possible, we're not going to get there. But I know we're going to get there, because this triangle is converging, and it's going to converge in months, not years. We're done with it here.
Next up, April Fossera, followed by Amira Ross.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Greenfield. First, I can't overlook to mention the impact that petrochemicals industry will make on the overall emissions of our region if it is allowed to build out to the current vision. A vision of Pittsburgh as the new capital of plastic shopping bag and plastic disposable packaging manufacturer is pretty depressing to me. I think the citizens of southwestern PA did not have much of a say in the decision to go with this with the full information, or at all. I think it's important for elected officials to understand the economic contribution that cleaner businesses like recreation, tourism, and solar installation could potentially make for cleaning companies. They also have to grasp how much we are all paying in excess medical costs and excess humidity and hoteling. If they don't grasp this, they will be susceptible to being told what the industry wants them to hear. Even if we are not directly in the airshed for Potter Township's plastic making facility, city of Pittsburgh residents are at risk of being downstreaked from fracking operations that may allow pollution into our water table and their neighbors. I don't know the answer to this, but I would just raise, how can city of Pittsburgh leaders join the other Ohio River Valley leaders to question the build-out of the petrochemicals industry here? Second, rather than describe all my experiences with the bad air smells and the poor air quality in general, I would just share some of the chatter about bad air that's been on my neighborhood social media, on Nextdoor.com. In 2018 and so far 2019, there was an average of six comments each on the 17 posts by nine different individuals about smelling a bad sulfur smell or moving to the region and having more trouble with, you know, all of a sudden breathing than they've ever had before. Smell is maybe where we first meet air pollution issues, but it has been linked to heart and respiratory disease and possibly autoimmune disease and Alzheimer's. As reported in the papers, US Steel is making a $1 billion investment in local facilities that it owns and runs, but this is not going to include fixing the leaking core governments that are part of the most aging equipment. And I would like to call for US Steel to repress the most aging parts of this equipment as well as investing in new parts. We know that investment rectifies not only public health, but it enhances job security.
Next up, Mira Russ, followed by Kelly Jagatich.
My name is Mira Russ. I live in Squirrel Hill, at the top of a hill where I can see daily regular emissions from a US Steel plant. I am also the mother of two, and I fear for my children's and my family's health. While there is deservedly a lot of attention after the fires in Claretton, of course, the problem of air pollution and air quality in Pittsburgh read dates with the fires, and you can see that from the poster that I'm holding. What you see here are screenshots from my phone from the Airenow.gov app. This is a sampling over the last year of the air quality in the city of Pittsburgh. You can see many days where the air quality was at orange levels or high yellow levels. Orange bubbles mean that the air is unhealthy for sensitive groups. Sensitive groups include children, and I bring my children inside when that happens. The first photograph is of the day where our air quality entered the red zone. It was appallingly high, and no one, as far as I could tell, was reporting on it. On that day, the media was reporting that it was an orange alert day that the state had issued, and we reached a level where the air was dangerous for absolutely everyone in the city. This is a mere snapshot of what's going on in the city of Pittsburgh. The city must stop punting to the county. There is a legal and moral obligation to make the county act. Look at this poster. Again, this is just a snapshot. The most livable city in America isn't livable if the air isn't breathable. Thank you.
Next is Kelly Jagatich, followed by Rob Hoffman.
Hi, my name is Kelly Jagatich, and I'm an outreach coordinator for the county council. Over the past several years, the council has spent time in Claretton meeting residents and documenting their stories on our project of how to remedy our losses. We have recorded over 50 videos of the committee members who live in the shadows of the Claretton sewers talking about the losses they have experienced due to pollution, the consistent stories of cancer and health relief are part of the story. Although Pittsburgh is a free area from Claretton, residents in the city are subject to many insane air problems that residents living in the shadows of the land experience. What we need to realize is that air travels. We are all living and breathing in the same airshed as US Steel and all of the other toxic polluters that call our region. After the December 24 fire in the Claretton sewers, many residents in the city felt the effects of the damage polluting controls. The Small Pittsburgh app has covered the smell complaints throughout the East End, and Facebook has filled the comments about industrial stenches and vials from U.S. Steel facilities. Although the county's health department is ultimately the body responsible for regulating the US Steel facilities, county council have a platform to take a stand against air pollution and amplify important legislative surrounding initiatives. So here are a few things that the county council can probably do. One is partnering with groups to doing air quality work to advance education on air quality concerns. This means amplifying events that teach people about things like air filters and the common monitoring and letting people know what corridors for your days are protected. Two, as Rachel mentioned earlier, ensuring that idling laws are enforced and that residents know proper procedures, reporting illegal idling in order to limit the amount of harmful waste that can be transmitted into the air. And three, investigating a plan to limit or ban illegal plastic products in the city. This may not seem directly related to air quality, but the shale cracker in deeper category by plastic pellets, many of which will be used for single-use product, the feed sack of this facility is methane, which makes fracking, and obviously a lot of people have mentioned this already. If we're serious about improving our region's air quality, we need to ensure that we are not only enforcing emissions regulations on existing legacy polluters like US Steel. We also need to ensure that we do not invest in new sources of industrial pollution, like that we have extraction and heavy chemical pollution. And for representatives of all of us of government, there are a couple of things that is important to do. One is denouncing federal polluters. You're going to speak up on these issues. And the second is that our county's health department is in the process of searching for a new director. It's important that all of our elected officials speak up and say that we want somebody in there to repair with this, of searching for a new director. It's important that all of our elected officials speak up and say that we want somebody in there to repair with this, if you're willing. So thank you.
Next up, Rob Hoffman, followed by Paul, Clean Water Action.
I just wanted to bring people to attention, the research.
I have a microphone.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah.
The concept of an urban canyon, you think about our valleys, but in our streets and our communities outside of downtown, our buses go through those canyons and fill them up with particulates. And we don't really have any regulations around air quality on the street where you're doing this. And I've been doing some research on it. I understand that the health, not the, school public health has done some studies in downtown. But we need to get the board authority to get moving faster on other buses throughout the region, obviously. But they, and too often, Sam Blas saying, many number of construction activities go unenforced throughout the city. You can see it everywhere. We need to get them serious about tightening up the enforcement of those regulations through our building permitting process as well as using data to know what the conditions are at your neighborhood street. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Paul. Paul Lacy, followed by Bobby Wilson.
Thank you a little bit short. I think this is good. Anybody hear me? Okay. Glad to be here with everyone today. Paul Lacy, I'm the Western Pennsylvania Director for Clean Water Action. And as somebody mentioned earlier, if you work on air quality in Pittsburgh or Allegheny County, you hear from a lot of people that air is much better than it used to be, right? And that is true. It is, it's better than it used to be. But what that really means when folks say that to me, I hear them saying, you know, stop talking about it, you should be grateful for the progress we've made, or it could be worse. And that's probably true, it could be worse, but that doesn't mean it's good enough. I grew up in Pittsburgh, and my grandparents grew up in Lawrenceville and McKees Rocks. And in the 1950s, they bought a house in Sheridan, where I live now, still, and they raised 10 kids in that house. And my grandma would tell stories about how she would hang her clothes out on a line, and by the end of the day, they'd be covered in soot, and she would have to wash the clothes for 10 kids all over again. So I'm glad that I didn't have to deal with that. But I, when I was growing up in the 80s and 90s, I was one of many children in my elementary school that constantly needed to use my inhaler. And I grew up pretty close to Neville Island. So I think that air, you know, better is not good enough. And I think we point out that we don't have cleaner air because of the benevolence of industry. We don't have cleaner air because industry decided to be better neighbors to people who live in their communities. We have cleaner air because of the Clean Air Act. We have cleaner air because local residents demanded it, and their elected officials took action and made it happen. So, you know, a couple of things I wanted to share with you about what's going on right now is Allegheny County is not meeting Clean Air Act standards, and there's a large section of Allegheny County that's consistently not. Folks in the Mon Valley and all, and the 22 communities that make it up, did not agree to be the sacrifice zone for US Steel. And, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, District 8, and the city of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, we all share an airshed, and we should be taking an active role in demanding clean air for all people in the county. We are, we're not going to be making coke in 40 years, hopefully, but there's still, we're still going to need jobs. So we need to start insisting on clean, green jobs and adjust transition now. Thank you.
Next up, Bobby Wilson, followed by Julia Coon.
Hello, I'm Bobby Wilson. I recently won the Democratic nomination in the primary of the Garland Harris. And so I want everyone to know that the North Side was came out, and we won big. But I also want to let you know that now there's a board for clean air, for fighting for clean air. I'd like to just take this time, just tell you a little about myself, but also to let you know, I really appreciate everyone coming up here and, you know, sharing their story, sharing their concerns, and thanks to Councilmember Crossberger for holding this. Something you may not know about myself is that currently, still, I work for the University of Pittsburgh's Empozema CUP Research Center. And something that I found out by working there is that not everyone who smokes can get an Empozema. So if you smoke a pack a day for 30 years, there's a possibility that you may not get an Empozema, and that your, that your breathing will actually be normal, just like someone who has never smoked. And the goal, what I'd like to see is they never have to research this for just regular air that someone's breathing, because someone who is addicted to cigarettes, they actually put themselves in a situation where there's bad, you know, bad air pollution. And we should never have to go through this, where we're actually looking at how we're just walking around, trying to have our kids go out and play on the swing set, you know, take them to Riverview Park, take them to other parks. And this is a concern for families, but it even reaches further. So let me trap them inside, we have to, we say, don't go outside because there's bad air pollution. Not everyone has the better housing, the better infrastructure inside, they will actually get some of these pollutants indoors, outside. So we also have to look at, you know, when we're cooking, there's different things that are being cooked on the stove top, and how that's really affecting these children whenever they're, you know, someone has, the children has asthma, how does that affect them? So I really want to work for the people in terms of making sure that they have good air quality, but also making sure that, you know, everything that's being, everything that's concerned here that you bring up, that I'm taking that in, feel free to reach out to me afterwards. I know that, you know, on the North Side, Glenn is really working hard to make sure that the railroads are really brought to the table, to make sure that the air quality, that they know that that's a concern. And, you know, that's a big, that's a big deal on the North Side. So let's keep moving forward. I really appreciate everyone else speaking after me, and if you'd like to talk to me afterwards, please come on, or, you know, please stop back and we can chat about how I can help your organization, how I can help your mission, how I can carry your mission in city council. Thanks.
Next up is Julia Coon, followed by Scott Ricker.
Hi, everybody. Thanks to multiple persons, Scott Ricker, for hosting this night. Thanks to all the advocacy people who are here and have been to teach us all about air quality and what we can do to improve it. So my name is Julia Coon, and I am a resident of Allegheny County. And more importantly, I remember I was in the toxic, is that I am an outsider. I moved here seven years ago to start my medical training at the University of Pittsburgh. Now I'm a physician, I'm a resident doctor, and I have one more year of my training to stay before I have a choice of whether to stay or leave. When I moved here, chose to attend school here, the only thing I knew about Pittsburgh was that it was a dirty steel town with six worst public air pollution in the country. That's really all I knew. I was very scared of moving here for that reason. I'm glad I moved here three days ago, and I welcome the city very much. But things really haven't changed since I've been here, and I'm concerned about that. And our husband, who I'm not here, he will speak later tonight, he has a respiratory condition, largely due to the air pollution. I have a backbone full of dirt, torn, scary, and super crazy in the city. So I don't have much time to talk, but I think what I wanted to say, from my perspective, is that we have public opinion, number one, who also have a real eye on their air quality here, and we have a health department whose job is to protect our city's air quality. We all in this room probably know that the health department is three years late and is planning to be EPA on how to improve our air quality. And that, to me, is appalling, which is appalling. But, so, you know, that combined with my anecdotal stories that are not evidence-based at all, but like, I'm a patient, I'm a doctor, our air stinks, it's terrible in the middle of the night. People can notice in the middle of the night, the air quality sensors are often turned off, you can't even tell, the particle matters in the air, it's scary. So do you, according to our elected officials here in the room tonight, please do your job and protect people, because I am very interested in the health department. I'm not doing it.
Next is Scott Ricker, followed by Billy Etting.
I'm Scott Ricker, the Executive Director of Bank Pittsburgh. Thanks so much for inviting us to actually talk about something that's important here. I'm here to talk about something that many people have a blind spot for, making up the problem of our air quality problem, which is cars. Gas-powered motor vehicles poison our air and contributes to climate change by emitting carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, hydrogen carbons, particulates, methane, and nitrous oxide. The organization I represent, Bank Pittsburgh, is a 3500 member strong organization, trans- The organization I represent, Bank Pittsburgh, is a 3500 member strong organization transforming our streets and neighborhoods so that everyone can safely bike and walk, the two least polluting modes of transportation. But what's the number one reason people get for not walking and biking more? Cars. People are afraid of getting hit. And the number two reason people don't walk or bike more is also due to cars, but in a different way. It's because for decades, we designed almost everything around cars. The most efficient and least polluting, not to mention the most affordable, system of transportation is this: all of your daily needs within easy walking and biking distance. This should be front of mind as we plan the future of Pittsburgh and make investments in our streets and neighborhoods. For too long, we've made decisions for our neighborhoods and the city as a whole around the assumption that most people should own a car and can afford to own a car. Twenty-five percent of Pittsburghers don't own cars. Too many things that we need are simply not close in proximity to where we live. And if they are, we've created a culture through our investment to encourage even short cars, even short trips to be made by car. We have to break the car culture in Pittsburgh and perform to earnestly address our air quality problem. In 2018, the city passed the Climate Action 3.0, which we don't have much time to implement, according to the IPCC report. But like Will said, implementing it would also do amazing things for our air quality. Both call for increasing biking from 2.5% of trips to 10% of trips, walking from 10% to 15%, doubling transit ridership while having single occupancy car trips. So what do we do? We have to be bold. The time for health measures is past. The city should be doing everything it can to discourage car use while investing massively in biking, walking, and transit. Bike lanes need to be connected across the entire city and protected from cars. Transit needs to be given priority with its own lanes and traffic lights. The city needs to rewrite our zoning code to eliminate parking minimums, to give a lot more housing, especially affordable housing near transit, near transit and jobs. We need to create car-free spaces for our residents. Besides the trails in our parks and along our riverfronts, there isn't a single car-free space in Pittsburgh. City should support and put on its own open streets events. In 2015, we partnered with GASP to look at our air quality during and after open streets and found that, the air quality monitors found the pollution levels were four times higher with cars than without. We can set aside time to make certain streets into car-free shopping streets, like Penn Avenue with the strip from 16th and 24th on weekends, without cars. Make more plazas like Market Square downtown, but without cars. The city also has to acknowledge that there's a higher and better use to the vast amount of space that on-street car stores are taking up and reallocate some of that space to make way for safe biking, walking, and transit infrastructure.
Next is Billy Eftin, followed by Emily Lee.
Thanks so much for bringing this on. So it may be a little unusual to bring the baby up here to the mic, but I think she deserves the voice here, too, because she has probably more instinct than anyone else in this room. No offense to all of you, but she has, she's a tiny baby, she has growing lungs. And so that's why I bring her up here. So I came to Pittsburgh about fifteen years ago and I love the city so much. I volunteered on again, off again, for several of the organizations that speakers here today and I want to thank all the friends who are up here. And I've always cared deeply about air quality issues. I have, you know, it's been involved with my research. I've talked to officials about the issue. I never thought that I would be one of the statistics that I sometimes mention when I'm writing, like the motivation section of my research. And then a year and a half ago, I was diagnosed with chronic rhinitis, that is likely due to air quality. Fifteen years of biking behind buses and reading all the industrial blues has taken toll. It's okay. I mean, I manage with it. I can deal. I'm not happy about it, I'm a little angry and sad. But six months ago, I got a sick baby and it matters like a hundred times more people. I don't want her to grow up to be one of the double the amount of people who have children who have asthma here and want her to be one of the pediatric cancers, the physics, or other respiratory diseases. For all the children of Allegheny County, I think we really need to take very drastic action to fix our air quality. Thank you.
Next up is Emily Lee. On deck is Kelly Preps.
Hi. I'm going to try to edit this out of the way so it doesn't be redundant with things that Allegheny County said, but I'm here tonight on behalf of Lawrenceville Clean Air Now. We are a new and growing group of people, residents and workers of Lawrenceville, who are deeply concerned about the effect that air pollution is having on ourselves, on our children. And we understand that children exposed to air pollution carry the effects of that exposure for their lives. I'm a mother of an eight-year-old child, I worry about that every day. And we worry about our children and our most vulnerable neighbors. Thanks to booming development, gentrification, and all that city planning, Lawrenceville has a huge and still growing amount of traffic congestion and diesel pollution. People flocking to our neighborhoods seem not to know that Lawrenceville is perhaps unique in Pittsburgh in terms of how close the neighborhood's heavy industry is operating next to other businesses and residents. It's far closer than modern zoning laws would ever allow. According to Penn Environment, two of the county's top companies, Top and Toxic Polluters, Pressure Chemical and McConway and Corley, which are located in Lawrenceville, have for decades been putting our air, chromium, benzene, magazines, chloroform, carbon monoxide, and other volatile organic compounds in public air pollution. We also have other manufacturers of businesses in Lawrenceville that are putting out similar toxins as well, silica fire retardants for smoke. Over the years, Lawrenceville residents have begged the Allegheny County Health Department to provide needed oversight and regulation, and they have often failed us. So that's just one neighborhood in Pittsburgh. Many others are affected. We, because of our topography, are probably, possibly, hopefully sheltered from the pollution that's coming from the Mont Valley, but folks in Larrimer and Squirrel Hill and Greendale, they might as well be standing right in front of a filter and coat themselves. So we all share this airshed. And the folks in the Mont Valley are certainly on the front lines, but we all suffer when US Steel doesn't comply with Clean Air regulations. And we need to stand together and use our clouts as a major city to force them to. So on behalf of Lawrenceville and everyone in Pittsburgh, and our neighborhood in the Mont Valley and in this region, I urge you to push the City Council to move quickly to listening to real action. Some of the recommendations I'm about to propose are from another new forum to move called East End Neighbors Fight Against Pollution. We're asking you to declare that our air quality is a health emergency, demand that the county take aggressive action. There are a number of different things that the county should be doing. I urge you to look to the Brief Collaborative and Expert on the suggestions and recommendations that they would urge you to follow. Within your authority at the city level, we are asking that you demand that the city face our diesel favor of natural gas vehicles, particularly in terms of buses and trucks and construction vehicles, and hopefully switching to electric vehicles that capacity rise. We are urging you to require the city to limit the flow of diesel trucks during rush hours and to thereby eliminating the presence of air pollution. And also to address one's recommendation regarding those type of things. But last, I don't know if you're aware of what happened with the South West Pennsylvania Commission. Sorry, one more second. South West Pennsylvania Commission voted on Monday. I'm going to measure that date, secretly ran through by Allegheny County Executive Fitzgerald and a number of other Scott Ricker, I'll tell you more about what happened there. We are now committed in our region to endorsing the petrochemicalization of the South West Pennsylvania region. That means more fracking, more fracking, more pipelines, hundreds of thousands of tons of air pollution that are definitely going to be reaching Pittsburgh. We need real leadership. We need real strategy in terms of that. And that's our vision for the future. Thank you.
Next is Kelly Preps, followed by Drew Hornis. First, to the North Side, I want to thank you, the first staff members of the city together. Thank you. This is honestly one of the first opportunities that any community members have had, besides stuff that has been put on by environmental organizations like the Mayor Council. So this is basically the first time that some people are doing active work. We really appreciate you being able to do this. My name is Kelly Preps. I'm the Western Pennsylvania Outreach Coordinator with County Sheriff's Department Environmental Advocacy Organization here in the state of Pennsylvania. I really just wanted to amplify some of the research, rather than be repetitive at the same time. A lot of the people in the communities that I work with, and I met your doctor, there was a baby up here. So I cannot stress enough that that is the real example and the real toll of what this pollution is doing to this city and to this county and to this area of Pennsylvania. There are children who have no parents, there are babies with asthma. You have so many of these stories that get told and amplified, and that's really my number one ask, is to make sure that these community voices are the ones that are being amplified. I know I can stand up here all day long, but I'm also a newcomer sometimes to the city because I've only been here for a year. And these people who've been here and been investing their lives into making this city one of the most livable cities here, those kind of people who have put in effort and time, love, pay back into the city, are also the ones suffering. So that's one of my biggest things that you can amplify. Lastly, I just ask that you apply and continue to vote, please, to support the County Health Department's recent track down on non-flying bluders, like US Steel's third footwork. Amplify the information that are coming from the air quality works as well, pushing that out through forums of media that you can. That's one of the biggest concerns that we continue to see is that information gap. So pushing out Allegheny alerts, making sure that people can make those decisions for themselves to get out, as I do what's best for you, do what you need to do to protect yourself when sometimes larger corporations are not protecting you. And lastly, shameless plug, just because I have it here with me tonight, we are doing a toxic neighbor petition right now to call on US Steel to really put some investment into their facility to make sure that this is not going to be an ongoing problem and to close down some of their most polluting batteries where we documented over 6,700 air quality emission violations in a number of three and a half years from our legal department. So these kinds of things need to be shut down or replaced. I have that petition. If you haven't already signed it, you know that you have. So thank you for your time. Next up is Drew Hornis, followed by Sarah Olstra.
First of all, thank you, Councilor Fitzgerald. This is just fantastic. Thank you to all the speakers who have spoken for me. I am actually a physician and a scientist. I was trained to be pediatric pediatricianologist, also a microbiologist. And I moved here about fifteen years ago to work at Children's Hospital for this problem for his decision of my life. I have never had so much fun in my life. However, during my last fifteen years here, the rise in childhood asthma, obesity, chronic illness, cancers is just amazing. It is just amazing making our lives as physicians quite difficult, the more complicated information or the things to take care of when they operate. So I'm here to raise my concerns of what we're doing here in the city, just to activate when there's a diesel sit. I just want to tell you, in order to prepare for this, I'm a scientist, a physician, and I'd never like to get up in front of an audience before reviewing the world's literature. And I did. I actually did less than one review of microparticular pollution. And it's just scary. I mean, just microparticular pollution and toxicology, and you'll get approximately, and book review, this is a national library of medicine, you'll get over 200 review articles of what we know, what we don't know, and what we're looking at. The scariest thing as a physician is that they're now finding out that women who are pregnant, who've been living in microparticular areas, or actually, I mean, from the particulate solutions in their lungs, the particulates in their lungs, they're slowly circulating into their bloodstream and got those particular, or goes to the fetus. And now they're starting to look at issues with congenital heart disease and the development of diabetes, early onset diabetes, and things like that. We don't have to understand that, but we do know that these compounds are toxic to older people and they're probably much more sensitive to toxicity in the fetus. So we do know, our air pollution is generated, and we talked about this, the thing that I'm interested in is, besides what everybody else knows, is basically the silence, pretty much a total of our elected government and particularly the Allegheny County Executive. So, I mean, I don't understand the silence. I really don't understand the silence, where the population are not like sheep and they don't want to be slaughtered. And so I just want to talk about, let's say, Rick Fitzgerald, the county executive. I know him, but I know his wife, but she's a pharmacist and worked for him at Children's Hospital. The most fabulous human being you could ever imagine. Now, I can't, I don't believe that the county executive or any elected politician doesn't care about their family. I just don't. They live here. They're innocent, suffering the same disease spectrum as we do. So what is the point of being silent? The answer is, they're jobs. Power. Power needs money and money feeds the power. And then they will say anything to get us to vote to get a life. I just, so we pay a very high price for what I'm going to term, maybe a little bit in an inflammatory manner, willful ignorance. This is just simply willful ignorance. Now let's look at the scientists who research these problems. For example, the University of Pittsburgh Health, the school public health, they're not immune to the problems resulting from such a pollution either. They publish. Why don't we hear from them? Why aren't they standing up? We have one professor here who was talking from Carnegie Mellon University, who was at the PIB's information session that I was at. And we don't hear from them. Why are they not advocating? Why are they not the administrators of the school advocating? Why is the University of Pittsburgh School of Medicine not advocating? Why is the University of Pittsburgh not advocating? Now we're going to come to something a little bit more, the big health count, the greatest employer in Pittsburgh is healthcare. Are they afraid that if we take care of our patients, that they're not going to have patients to come to the hospital? What actually is going on here? The greatest advocates in our city, besides the county executive and our elected officials, should be the healthcare providers, the conglomerates Geferomov, UPMC, Allegheny Health Network. These are the people that should be advocating for their patients. What we learn in primary care is that the greatest thing we can do for our patients is preventive medicine. Preventive toxicology means keeping bad things from associating with our bodies. I don't care how we define what's allowed to bike or, and I can't go out biking anymore because I come back with problems, asthma. I never had asthma. I do now. So these are the things that need to happen, we need as a group to pressure not only politicians, but to pressure the healthcare, the large conglomerates, the healthcare companies to advocate for their patients, that they have the clout that we don't. Thank you.
Next up is Sarah Olstra, followed by Debra. Sorry that I can't read your last name from the brief project.
Sorry that I can't read your last name from the Breathe Project. So my name is Sarah Ollick, and I head up the electric vehicle program at Duquesne Light Company, your local electricity transition and distribution company. At the recent Pittsburgh boom ringer, I'm happy to have found a place at home where I can continue my EV mission after working on electric vehicles for a decade in DC, including a great stint working on EV policy at President Obama's White House Council on Environmental Quality. When my husband Jake and I were making the decision to move home or not last year, Pittsburgh air quality was definitely in the calm category, so I personally really appreciate this discussion. According to the EPA, transportation recently overtook power generation as our country's greatest source of emissions. It is clear that transportation emissions must be addressed if we want to improve air quality in Pittsburgh. So how can an electric vehicle help reduce emissions? According to the Department of Energy, an EV that is charging up in Pennsylvania emits one-third of the emissions of a gasoline vehicle. Today, we have 2,500 EVs in our service territory with the potential of getting 35,000 EVs on the road by 2025. At Duquesne Light, we want to support that growth and we're doing that a number of ways. I'll just highlight a couple. We're improving access to EV information to our customers by adding more information and tools on our website, developing training material for local automotive car dealerships, and supporting education and outreach events. Like just this past weekend, we sponsored the car show at the EV Car Show as part of Solar Fest at Brick Park. We're offering incentives to our customers, like an EV bill credit, and supporting the growth of public charging stations by offering businesses in Pittsburgh area up to $32,000 towards charging station installation costs. When you combine that money with currently available state incentives with the Driving PA Network Program, electric vehicle charging stations for publicly accessible charging are almost zero cost. So if you're working with your local municipalities to take advantage of this money, if you want to talk more to me afterwards, maybe. We're leading the way by allocating 20% of our fleet budget to electric vehicles every year. And lastly, we're working with the Port Authority to introduce, support the introduction at Pittsburgh's first to all electric buses with no tailpipe emissions. With no tailpipe emissions, this means zero localized fine particulate matter and a reduction of 65 tons of emissions each year. Duquesne Light is committed to working with our local government and our customers to reduce transportation emissions. We'd really love to see more supportive EV policy and programs in Pittsburgh. Personally, obviously, this is a huge passion of mine. Electric vehicles, my life's work. I'm really happy to be at Duquesne Light doing this. I know a lot of you already in the room and I'm happy to continue to work through any avenues, different means. If you have a meeting going, and you want me to come out and speak about electric vehicles that are, if you want me to support a project that you're working on, please know that we're supportive and excited to work with you. Next up is Deborah Smith, followed by a written statement that will be read on behalf of Kelly here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Deborah Smith. I'm here on behalf of the Breathe Project, but more so, I'm here on behalf of myself and my own struggles to breathe in here in Pittsburgh. Allegheny County's made tremendous strides in air quality. We've all heard that since the smoky, grumpy days of the past. I remember well, 30 or 40 years ago, I'll be downtown, I'll be sitting in the streetcar with my grandmother and coming back home with a cone with a thin film of sooty particulates all over my clothes. Back in the day, we could actually see when we were breathing. It covered us from head to toe, pollution from industry, a soupy mix that included exhaust from cars and trucks that didn't have the air pollution control equipment that we have today. My family moved away from Pittsburgh when I was young, but by the time we moved back in 1993, the city of Pittsburgh was a very different place than the one I left. Yet Pittsburgh still has an air quality problem that none of us can see. I learned about this when shortly after we moved to the South Hill, I began having serious breathing problems. I had never had asthma before. I had never had any breathing problems. Definitely visits to the hospital emergency room and I was told to go to see an allergy and asthma specialist, who explained to me that in Pittsburgh, we live in a river valley where pollutants are periodically trapped when your air rises up under the former air mass. It's an atmospheric effect that we all know now as inversion. So began my education, always had a hope of asthma. I learned that I was not alone. Asthma is very common in Allegheny County and the rates have not faded. While 10% of adults and 12% of school-aged children had asthma here, the rates were more than double and in some places tripled, which means that this is a serious health disparity for asthma. Three years ago, I became even more aware of the air quality problem and disparities we suffer when, after 25 years as a newspaper journalist, I began working with the Breathe Project, a coalition of citizens and environmental advocates, health professionals and academics, who are all working together to improve our air. Working directly with residents and communities that struggle day in and day out for air quality has been a sobering experience for me. It frustrates me when officials try to downplay air quality realities that we all face every day. It's heartbreaking to meet an rural citizen who are breathing in the air of a plant that's very close by, who talk about smells at night, who talk about generations of family members who are dying, neighbors who are dying, people who are sick. And then they talk about how they smell us at night, they go out in cars, they're covered in soot, and they have to take towels to wipe it off. Because industry admits the pollution at night because they think nobody's watching. Well, guess what? We have a breathing amp now. If you want to see it, you can watch it on the Breathe Project. They open up the doors, the flames fly out, and you can see the pollution come down. It's all unlawful. In 2017, the air quality in Pittsburgh region was measured to be not good by the EPA for two-thirds of the year. Those figures were exactly the same in 2016. And as long as we have polluting plants, like the US Steel Co Works, it's very unlikely to improve. I can assure you that the air that residents of Plaerston, Long Valley breathe does impact our air quality here in Pittsburgh. Just ask anyone in Squirrel Hill, air goes no batteries. One of my greatest fears as a resident in this region, however, is the threat that is looming on the horizon. Once Michelle Crafton Plan flips the switch on the Beaver County Plant, it will churn out plastic murdles that feed our insatiable appetite that we have for plastics. And the residents of southwestern PA foretell the toxic, volatile, organic compounds, 522 tons per year, not to mention the 2.25 million tons of carbon dioxide pollutants that will be emitted by this plant. This will not only murder our air shed and impact the quality of the air we breathe, but it will make it absolutely impossible for the city of Pittsburgh, let alone the planet, to meet Paris climate, climbing aboard climate change goals. I thank you for allowing us to all voice our concerns about the region's air quality today. And I encourage you and our leaders to not stop short and address the impacts of industry like petri chemicals, as well as possible tools on our health. Pittsburgh must take a firm stand against unlawful pollution by fossil fuel industries that have affected the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And now a written statement on behalf of Kelly.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger, for repeating the session. I wish that I could break you proud, but that will happen because we're grabbing wrong people. You know the facts too well. We are the worst 2% of areas in the country with cancers caused by air pollution. Our score for air quality places us in the 7th percentile. Our youth asthma rate is several times worse than the average median of the country. The largest contributor to our small particle ozone pollution, earning an F from the American Lung Association for these pollutants, is US Steel. US Steel's Clear to Co Works is the biggest source of this blight that gets our region. I respectfully suggest that you consider repeating another session and doing the following. Please invite our largest health insurance insurers, UPMC, Copland, Highmark, and UPMC, and ask them why they have not spoken about the health crisis caused by air pollution in our region. I invite the Allegheny Conference on Urban Development and ask why they have been silent on the very issue that led to the creation of the conference 70 years ago. Can we think of the next 75 summit that will take place tomorrow, June 27th? Has a bump? It ties to my initial supporters, US Steel, Highmark, and UPMC, absolutely. I invite the University of Pittsburgh School of Public Health, one of the top programs in the country, and ask why. Although they have the research and the data, they are not advocating for action on the greatest threat to our public health in our region. Invite the county executive, Rich Fitzgerald, and ask why he didn't speak out on the subject until our yet another fire at the Clear to Co Works. They want to do more than merely use the rest of this discipline. Ask them why the county is content on telling these small points of US Steel for its huge number of Clean Air Act violations. Finds that they appeal, and even if they eventually have to pay, really are just a minor cost for them to do business. If all of those invited show up, they will have something to say and there will be a story. If they don't show up, it's a different kind of story. The city of Pittsburgh claims that has no jurisdiction on the issue. Yet the city took full action on that control, an issue which it also has no jurisdiction. There is no limit on the mayor and state council to talk to it, to speak out and take action, even if it's a volley. If you have a bully in the pulpit, I urge you to use it. The time for listening is over. There's no action in your mouth. That is a consequence that forces change in behavior. Why is it a consequence? That adds to the second fire at the US Steel Co. The Allegheny Health Department's for a sudden shutdown. That's the kind of thing that needs to happen all the time. Let's have a zero tolerance policy.
Thank you, Zoya. So next up is Steve Riccardi, followed by Eddie Show. Eddie Show, followed by Kimo. I can't pronounce your last name. All right, I can't read your last name very clearly, but you can hear my first name.
Thank you all for coming tonight. There's not too much I can say that hasn't been said. I've lived with 12, 14 years. My lungs are awful. I fight most of the time for general operation. I'm afraid to look inside my lungs. Two evidence-based facts. Two days ago, I opened up my window to clean the cell in the white tissue. One swipe, the finest black particulate matter you can imagine. One swipe, it wasn't finished though. Many times, I've washed my car. The next morning, I came out on the hook. This is what I did. Fine, black particulate matter is what we're breathing here. Number three, this is my last thing, is Rich Fitzgerald. He has five kids, lives in Squirrel Hill. Yes, they breathe the air. We should organize a campaign wearing masks and say no to Fitzgerald's reelection. He is worthless and we have to get rid of him because we need to show the powers that be, as many people have said here, that the current levels of pollution that we're all breathing are unacceptable and we can't tolerate it more because it's killing us. So please do whatever you can to not reelect Rich Fitzgerald next time.
Next is Kimo Don, followed by Lucy DeBarro. Is Lucy here? There you are. And followed by Floyd Horus.
Well, I am also a newcomer to the city, but it's recent newcomer to the city and a person who experienced the difference in the quality of breathing. So I am sort of, to describe it, this is sort of like a feeling of just not being able to take a full breath. This is how it feels. I did not have that problem where I let me allow it. Now I have a path walking up the hills in Squirrel Hill, walking up, you know, in required. Of course, I'm aging, okay? This is not evidence of anything but subjective experience. It's not necessarily the illness that is diagnosed, but it's not a pleasant sort of state of affairs for residents to, in the city. And I do live in the view of the river. So when I step out of my porch, I see the Monvalena River. And I thought this was a wonderful blessing, but it's not. The air actually travels very easily along the river. We know on the maps shown to us about the air quality distribution, how bad that air quality is in that region. And so I also am sensitive to smell of VOCs. So many times, we open the door or window and we quickly shut it down and check the smell of GH and report as well as what is happening. It's a calamity of this pollution ongoing kind of situation where it is yet another, you know, dark day on the, you know, regular calendar kind of map of what's going on in our air quality. This is disturbing. And one last anecdote. So my son, sorry, my daughter's son, so my grandson has visited Pittsburgh. And this was a couple of years back. He was a smaller baby and he had experienced like an asthma attack at night. And I, you know, we had to get up and go to the hospital to deal with this. This was not his normal condition. This is scary. This is not an easy situation. And, you know, my daughter and her husband are both professionals. I could be hoping for them to move to Pittsburgh, right? I could be wishing to have my relations closer to me and I struggle whether I should be or should not be entirely close to them. And that's the personal story from everybody.
Next up is Floyd Horus, followed by Vencer.
Introduction of contaminants into the natural environment. Oh, okay. Pollution is the introduction of contaminants into the natural environment that cause adverse changes. Pollution can take the form of chemical substances or energy, such as noise, heat, light, or naturally occurring contaminants. That's the Google definition. I partly grew up in Homewood in the 7400 block entitled The Street. During those years in the 60s, Homewood was an industrial mall with a burial hall, a garbage recycling company in the 7500 block. However, in my block, there was an aluminum coating, a fall berry making plant, and a bakery, bakery next to a body and fender shop. My parents realizing I had an asthma, moved us away to East Ridge, a mile away where the clouds of pollution were not hanging in the valley as they were in Homewood. With the hills to the east, south, and north, the only good thing was the streetcars that were housed in Homewood four blocks on Frankstown Avenue. Ten years later, the laws changed. The polluting companies started moving out. Then the streetcars left for the South Hill and in return, they traded us with harmful contaminants buses, spewing their gagging, black pollution fumes all over our valley. Now, 20 years later, a busway with two main stops, one in Wollapurn, ordering Homewood. The East River Court Hill, as I call it, where not just two buses were stopped, but up to eight buses at a time. Drivers taking 45-minute lunches or breaks with the diesel engines running for no apparent reason. for no apparent reason, not needing a heater or air conditioner. Do you mean to tell me that buses need to run because they do not have an ignition to crank? I am here to tell you from my personal experience of driving a diesel-powered vehicle for 38 years, you can turn the vehicle off and you can restart it. Even the school buses in front of Bay's On School who are idling in front of the no-idling sign on front of the building. Check your neighborhood school and see if they're idling there in front of the schools also, and your neighborhood. The city pays them to kill us. Another pollution is where the children leave school and they're running towards this missile, but the contaminants are attacking their lungs. They are lung-challenging. When a person's running and their lungs and throat start to close, the first thing that happens is you stop and bend over, under, trying to get under the small cloud, forcing air forcibly in and out, trying to breathe. You forget about the paperwork in your hands. At that point, you don't even remember you have hands. Your main focus is living. Survival takes over. What's in your hands falls to the mercy of the wind and gravity and ends up in my yard across the street. Another form of pollution, literally without receptacle or site, except for the usually full can in front of the school. Between the five streets from Hamilton Avenue, Alford Street, Dioga Street, Casino Way, Susquehanna Street, to Finance Street, and from Braddock Avenue, Britsland Street, Thanky Avenue, Don'tland Street, Elbin Street, to Homewood Avenue. I have counted three trash cans, and one of those three cans is in front of the school. A combined block total of 30 blocks, three cans. No wonder my neighborhood is litter polluted. Easy solution: more cans. I visited Vancouver, and they have electric buses with streetcar electrical lines above them, saving people's eyes from burning, noses from running, throats from closing, ears from clogging with noise. Raise your hand if you have a hole in your throat to talk through. I gave up cigarettes 26 years ago just to start wheezing again. City Council, you have the power to put an end to this senseless, non-action delivery. Write a grant, pass a bill, draft an ordinance, lobby the state. Question: Does one of your family members have to die as a direct result of this scrutiny?
Next is Lynn Terry, called by Mary.
Hello, can you hear me? So I'm a children's book author and illustrator and filmmaker, and I'm actually from Maryland. And we got a grant to put on some civic engagement and democracy workshops here in Pittsburgh. And every time I came here, I'd tell them I was getting sick. And then I'd go home and I'd be fine, and come here and I'd be sick. And I realized that this coughiness or asthma, whatever it was, that it was actually caused by being in Pittsburgh, which was pretty disconcerting. But what I deal with is, in my children's books and films, is hope and success stories. And so in these workshops, we show educators how they can empower young people. A lady conservation voters study showed that most people get their environmental information when their kids are coming to school, materials of kids coming to school. Kids are the biggest people, and it's on their parents who need a more sustainable lifestyle. So we had a young girl who was coming and participating in our workshops. She lives very close to the fracking fields, and they brought, she brought these materials to this here, this workshop that showed that these, that oil and gas companies were bringing this information to the schools about how good the fracking was for everybody. So I just wanted to bring this up to everyone because I think that you've seen Red Thunder, and you've probably seen a lot of the kids now, how are speaking out. And I think that to get young people more involved in this, more engaging, this issue of air quality would be a way to really get some good politicians, just to get people inspired. And the last film I did was called Words of Power by an African-American girl in Bridgeport, had terrible asthma, and she stuck out, went to the city council, and they galvanized the community, and they ended up shutting down the coal bar power plant. So young people have so much talent, and I'm, so I'd like to discuss with anybody who's interested how we can better engage really young people, elementary, middle school, high school kids, to be really pushing the politicians. The other thing is there's a group called Schools for Climate Action, and they have a school board resolution. So just as someone here is talking about having these hospitals and other places like that speaking out and advocating for clean air, school boards, whose mandate is to protect the young people in their charge, school boards could be signing these resolutions and actually making statements to their elected officials, trying to move that forward. And I also want to mention one more thing. A book called River Run Wild, stories of a natural river in Massachusetts, terribly cool, disgustingly cool, and people thought they couldn't possibly clean it up. And then this one woman organized the community, and they cleaned up the river. It's now a clean, clear river and much better for the economy. So I think that this is possible to clean up Pittsburgh's air, and good luck.
Next up is Mary. And that is actually our final speaker. If there is anyone who has decided in the meantime that they would like to speak, they'd come up and see me and raise it up.
Thanks for listening. A wonderful opportunity to come together with the county people, city people, citizens, breathers with problems and breathers without problems who are still caring about us. I have a few examples of the emissions bad news phenomenon. Positive developments spoke with qualifications. First, we heard again and again that our air quality is much better than the battle of days in Hill of the Rock. And that's true, but one little subtlety is that back then, the really ultra-polluting particles, the ones that penetrate deep into our lungs and you can get it in our bloodstream and our brains, back then, those fine particles would fly onto big particles and fall out quickly. So they weren't available to go into our lungs. So we're still having health problems, we're having different health problems. Certainly nice to be able to see across the block, which we're now still. Another bit of good news is that renewables are beginning to reach parity with fossil electricity, meaning that the cost is becoming similar to, when you compare things like wind and solar to coal and gas and nuclear. How will life have taken this long? It's only taken this long for the huge subsidies, grandfathered for fossil fuels, including direct subsidies like consumption subsidies, which are more than $400 billion a year, that are even doing the job that they were meant to do, which was to make electricity, make power more affordable for more people. Because wealthier people use more energy. Same reason that the price of carbon would be aggressive and improve the flow of lower-income people because it would be a larger, the wealthier people would pay more, let the rebate in the kind of paid dividend policy would be evenly distributed. Except for that doesn't work so well with consumption subsidy. One more piece of good news is that there are a lot more jobs in the rural communities than what we have now. However, as Eva, I think they pointed out, they don't always pay as well. Some coal miners, you know, they're determined, equal that with solar installers on route. And because the health and safety hazards to coal workers were not externalized costs, the, you know, to mention the externalized cost of health impacts of fossil energy, which we're all talking about. The dangers of coal mining are not externalized. Doesn't go to the people around the mines and people who have coal plants, but there's not many of those high-grade miners now, but due to the laws of automation, they've been down in a operating one of a coal mine, and there were just a couple guys down there running machines. The people who want to keep their heavy jobs, though, are not the ones who died in mine collapses or pipeline explosions or of lyme disease. Mean jobs are by and large much cleaner and safer jobs and healthier. So I hope that the county and the city will spend more time there reporting pieces to the energy sector region that are manufacturing and installing intelligent to enter building operations and creating material. A just transition requires, we not leave already disadvantaged, maybe with the dust. One item of good news, good news: if we solve climate, we solve a problem.
Whether it is last call for any other speakers, all right.
Fred, I'd like to just point out that the opportunity for electric buses is huge. We already know that electric buses are cheaper to fuel, they're cheaper, they're less, are less maintenance. And with the driving price of batteries, they will soon be as cheap as diesel buses. And we know that they only use energy when you hit the accelerator on electric buses. Diesel buses fuel up its pollution all the time. So I read a recent article that the US now has about 300 electric buses. In China, they have 400, they have not 400 electric buses, they have 400,000 electric buses in China deployed in less than 10 years. So I applaud the efforts to deploy electric buses, and I would like to see us deploy natural gas buses. And thank you, electric buses are here now and today. Thanks for paying money for helping to make electric buses happen in the city.
Thank you, Fred. Anyone else? That's all.
My name is Kate St. John. I'm a lover, I get this wrong, but pollution. And with the very early events of Pittsburgh, one of the things that came to mind was that our county officials, our state officials, our state officials, all wanted for jobs, especially in our region, to come to Pittsburgh. But imagine a company touring Pittsburgh when it stinks. So if you look at, read that neighborhoods that have big industry, big leaders, those are the, if you really examine them, those are the poor neighborhoods. So by keeping our area polluted, we're making ourselves poor with fewer jobs.
All right, thank you all so very much. I just give yourselves a round of applause. This is an amazing and powerful event. And I know that personally, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but likely on behalf of many other elected and non-elected leaders out there and leaders in the environmental community, that this is reaffirming my fight and my commitment to this fight. And now I know that when I speak out on this important issue, that I have virtual army, a real army of people to back me up. So thank you for speaking out, always speaking out, and for being here tonight and using your voice and your voice. I'm not going to stop listening, but as was mentioned, tonight now is a time for action too. And you give me a lot of ideas on not only what city council and city can do, but how to work with my partners at the county and at the state level, and even at the broader level to make real change, and all of you as well. I consider you my partners as well. So thank you again, and have a great evening.